newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Help keep medications out of waterways by participating in National Drug Take Back Day on April 26 from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. This event is a safe and convenient way to dispose of unwanted, over the counter, and prescription drugs. Drop off locations include Lee Summit Police Department, the Lee Summit Medical Center, and The Places Restaurant at John Knox Village. Your feedback is needed on the city's capital improvement plan, which outlines anticipated city infrastructure improvements for fiscal years 2026 through 2030. The online comment period runs through the this evening, April 21st, on the city's website. But comments can also be submitted in person at the April 24th Planning Commission meeting. And participate in the summit, April 26th or 27th. Pick a street, grab some bags, and help clear litter from our community. Prizes will be awarded for the most unique item found, the most waste collected, and the best social media post. Please register the street or area that'll be cleaned on the city's website. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard.
We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing, it's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
So many of our past successes were made possible by understanding the multitude of perspectives in our community. When we take the time to see the world through someone else's eyes, we enrich our own understanding and foster an environment where everyone can thrive. When I see the renovations we've made to our parks, I see an investment, not just in essential infrastructure, but in people. That builds community and directly impacts the physical and social well-being of our
I see equity, inclusive playgrounds where people from all walks of life can come together.
I see a place to play.
When I see the development we have helped facilitate in our community, I see the results of solution-oriented decision-making, with job opportunities, easier access to goods and services, housing options, improved infrastructure, and increased economic growth.
I see projects created through collaboration between the city and developers that will provide value, benefit, and opportunity to the Lee Summit community.
I see growth in community and a way to connect more people to their food.
When I see the major road improvements underway, I see well-connected and safe transportation that enhances mobility and increases access to local businesses, spurring economic growth, safe deliveries to homes, and happy trips to ballgames and activities.
I see improved roadways, added sidewalks, and shared-use paths for pedestrians and cyclists, safe transportation and recreation for all.
I see better connectivity, increased lanes, less congestion, and just make it easier to get around.
When I see the investments we've made in public safety, I see enhanced emergency preparedness and first responders who are ready on a moment's notice to protect the community and deliver immediate lifesaving care.
I see the city value its fire department employees' come-to-farishion in recruitment, retention, and a positive culture.
I see a community that can respond to emergencies quickly. My whole family lives in Lee Summit, so there's a lot of peace of mind there.
What we do is not just about making decisions and funding budgets. It's about enriching the quality of life for all of our residents. It's about realizing that a building is not just steel and concrete, a park is not just metal and ropes, a road is not just asphalt, and a city is not just land. It's about the experiences we provide to all people of all generations and backgrounds. I have always volunteered in the community, and I was always really involved, but then I ran for school board. Whenever I got done with my with my term, I just felt like I had more to give. It's always been my goal from day one is to get everyone in the community connected and working together, and I always called it a spirit of community. Well, mayor's 24/7, and I have a job. I've had to work really hard at compartmentalizing, is what I call it. So during this time, I'm going to do work. During this time, I'm going to be a mayor, even though I can get a call at any moment about mayor stuff. And so I've had to even work that much harder at setting aside time for myself or for family. So I like to exercise, I like to work out. Hillary's my wife, she actually goes to work out with me as well. We do like to go downtown to the shops. We make sure we maximize our time together. I've got two kids as well, and we spend a lot of time with them, or whatever time they will give us these days. And I have a dog. I think most people that know me know I have to have a dog. We have so much development going on, and we're growing fairly quickly, so we have a lot of infrastructure needs. And sometimes we have gaps in infrastructure, and we've always managed to get by, but with this kind of growth, we're really having to be creative and look at our options and just have a good plan for water, sewer, roads, and more. If we want to grow the most healthy way, we need a diverse economy. We do have a lot of retail that's opened up here, and there's been new construction for retail. We really need to focus in the future on bringing some, you know, well-paying jobs here, good, strong employers that want to be located in this incredible community of now 101,000 people. A lot of our workforce does commute to work still, so they leave Lee Summit to go to work, and it'd be nice if we could keep some of those citizens right here in our in our community. The times I feel most proud are actually when I'm in the community and I see the community come together.
We have Buddy in the house.
The tree lighting is always very fun. I always feel very proud. It's just a great, warm feeling. The same thing goes for when the council will do something and we come together and make a good decision together. There's been a few of those that I just, you go home feeling like a winner. And one of them was when we put together the downtown farmer's market, when we bought the land, and it became real, you know, all that hard work. But also the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, that was months and months of discussions and conversations that were really hard to have, and we went ahead and moved forward and as a council all together, and I was very, very proud of that. And there are a few things that the citizens have done that have really helped us tremendously. First, in the middle of a pandemic, they passed a use tax, which is a way for us to collect sales tax whenever someone purchases online. That helps shore up our revenues so that we can continue to provide those high-quality services that our city provides. And it helps us take care of our employees, it helps us with our public safety and more. So I can't be more thankful to the citizens for that. Lee Summit has the opportunity to be have a major impact on the economy in the Kansas City area. We already, as an economy, are rolling along with such a high median income. We have an amazing workforce here that are paying taxes, they're paying property taxes, they're paying sales taxes, they're keeping our economy rolling, and we really are getting the attention of all our neighbors. And I think that what's going to happen is you're going to see the opportunity for us to really get everybody's attention when businesses start moving here, bigger businesses and more, so. You should try to find a way to give back to the community, whether it's at the city level, you know, citizen committees, or just, you know, participating in some of our community conversations whenever we have those opportunities. It's worth coming out of your shell or taking, you know, that leap of faith and just showing up and saying, what can I do or how can I help? Welcome, everyone. I was going to let you all know upfront, you might not be able to hear us as well as you might from the dais, but the speakers are working, they've tested it all out. So, welcome, everybody. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, Betho, would you say the prayer?
Oh, you're not. Okay, all right. All right, let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for bringing us together tonight again to conduct business that will, we're here just to make, serve you and make this community better. Please inspire us and respect each other, and let this be a productive session for all of us and help those that are not here with us tonight. Amen.
(inaudible)
We are having a joint meeting tonight, as you can see. We're going to get to that soon, where we're going to talk about design standards for the City of Lee Summit. We've got our planning commissioners here with us, who we've worked with many times over the years, and we do this annually, but this year we're doing it a couple of times, so that's why you're seeing us in this format. We will do some agenda items, a couple of proclamations, then we'll dive into the presentation, and then we'll take a break afterwards, and then we'll go back up there and run through the public hearings, so that you won't have to be right here in this location when they're doing the public hearings. You're more than welcome to stay, but you also can take off if you have business. But to start off, I would need to call to order the City of Lee Summit regular session, not regular, yeah, it is a regular session, number 35, it's a joint session with the Planning Commission. I'm calling that to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Rader.
Present.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Present.
Mayor Pertim Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here.
And Commissioner Tuzinski.
Present.
Commissioner Frazier.
Present.
Commissioner Kitchens.
Here.
Commissioner Gronau.
Here.
Commissioner Benbrook. Commissioner Jenna Ford. Commissioner Lovellis. Vice Chair Traptan. And Chairperson Arth.
All right, thank you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We're going to do this planning commission, the way the planning commissioners do, which is without a device, so can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Shields to approve the agenda as presented, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shields.
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell.
Aye.
Councilmember Funk.
Aye.
Councilmember Rader.
Aye.
Mayor Pertim Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Baird.
Aye.
All right, second thing on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Councilmember Shields?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as published. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as published by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please roll call vote.
Wow. Councilmember Shields?
I'm sorry, was that me?
Yes, Councilmember Shields. Councilmember Hodges.
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell.
Aye.
Councilmember Funk.
Aye.
Councilmember Rader.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Aye.
Mayor Pertim Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Baird.
Aye.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the council roundtable. These are items of general interest, community announcements, things of that nature. And commissioners, you are more than welcome to also chime in. So anything going on that we might need to know about? Councilmember Shields?
So a couple of things going on downtown. The farmer's market is officially open, and they'll have their Wednesday market tomorrow, and then do Wednesdays and Saturdays throughout the season. They are also doing the Fourth Friday's Art Walk this Friday evening, and there's going to be a lot of fun activities, a lot of great artists downtown. And then this weekend, over at MCC Longview is going to be the Flights of Fancy Kite Festival from noon to 5:00, and I know we'll have some good representation from Lee Summit. I think our DMO is going to be out there promoting the city and then letting folks know about their activities, so hope everyone makes it down.
Thank you. Excellent. Anybody else? All right. We do have a couple of proclamations. The first one is Neurodiagnostic Week, and I believe Darla Hall's here, and I think she might have some people with her. I might have to borrow his glasses. No, I'm going to try this without. Whereas, and I am saying correctly, neurodiagnostics is the practice of analyzing and monitoring central and peripheral nervous system function to promote the effective treatment of neurological diseases, injury, and impairment, and whereas neurodiagnostic technologists play a paramount role in the diagnosis and treatment of a variety of neurological conditions, including epilepsy, unexplained coma, sleep disorders, and spinal cord injuries, whereas neurodiagnostic technologists contribute to surgical treatment by monitoring the central and peripheral nervous system during high-risk procedures such as surgery for scoliosis, carotid artery disease, brain tumors, and spine trauma, thereby guarding against neurological complications during surgery and helping reduce risk of negative surgical outcomes such as paralysis or stroke. Whereas neurodiagnostic technologists are engaged in lifelong learning, dedicated to a life of service and compassion, have the greatest respect of the worth and dignity of individuals, and are devoted to the best interest of the patient while providing the highest-quality patient care. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim April 21st through 26th as Neurodiagnostic Week. I see Darla Hall here, but who are you?
My name's Kevin Helm. I'm the executive director for Asset, the society.
Okay. Darla, you want to say a few words to him? I'm Darla Hall. I'm the membership manager, and the reason we asked for this proclamation is even though we're a remote society, we're actually headquartered here in Lee Summit, so.
Just thank you very much. This is a, we are an international organization. I would encourage you, if you do go to your hospital, and the way that we explain our services, if you have a sleep study or you go to the nursery room, epilepsy, anything, the folks that are hooking the electrodes up to your head, those are our professionals. And there's a credentialing body behind that worldwide, globally, probably about 20,000 technologists that we're aware of, so thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate it.
We're sending in the proclamation this year.
Come this way. There, we got a couple people there. If you want to move over and take a straight on. Yeah. Can you take one more photo? She wants to step out. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next we have Building Safety Month. I see a crew of Building Safety members back here. Come forward, please. Hello.
Hi.
Great crew. All right. Whereas the City of Lee Summit is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depends on safety and essential role of homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when natural disasters strike. Whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of communities largely unknown protectors of public safety, our code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. Whereas Game On is the theme for Building Safety Month 2025 encourages all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. By the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim May 25th as Building Safety Month. Did you, did you notice how I just spit all those words out versus neurodiagnostic? I'm not used to that word. But would you announce who you are? Tell me, or you can announce everybody if you want, or you can go down the road.
Amy Nassif, interim director of development. And just, this is an amazing group of people, and just some, some fun facts about what we do. Since 2020, we have approved over 14,000 building permits. And, and that takes a lot of work and a lot of hard work and effort and talent from this team. And with that, too, has been, I've got the number, 77,000 since 2020. We also then have had 77,958 inspections. And that is all to make sure those life safety issues are being met, that those buildings are safe and secure, and working with this group. And so this group, all the way down the line from scheduling, from permit review and everything, and approval, takes care of that for us, so.
And when people call me and they're not happy because they have to have inspections done, I say, because we're trying to protect you.
Exactly. And that also has been permit valuation, because we got this number, too, thanks to Tracy, of $1,812 million since 2020. So just really interesting facts that people don't, all the behind-the-scenes. So.
Tracy Deister.
Who also.
Who also. Code Administration Manager.
And just recently celebrated 30 years with the city.
Kathy Ryu, customer service rep.
Sarah Agler, customer service rep.
Andrea Sessler, development technician.
Trista King, customer service rep.
Brandon Callwy, development technician.
Steve Robbins, Assistant Director of Field Services.
Rob McQueen, fire inspector.
Andrew Dressler, fire inspector. Jim Eden, Assistant Chief of Fire Prevention.
All right, excellent. Isn't it wonderful we had Planning Commission here tonight? Just, we timed it perfectly for you, so it was a great month to do this. So thank you for all the work that you do and keeping everyone safe, and so it really is critical to everything that we're doing and all of our growth, so thank you all. Thanks for showing up tonight. Can we get a photo real quick?
Can you not? [inaudible]
Thank you all again. Well, that takes us to our first kind of order of business other than the consent agenda, which would be to go back to the part two of our meeting with the Planning Commission. We've got a presentation on architecture and building design standard project update, that's what we're calling it. We have our consultant here, we've got Amy Nassif, who you just saw, and Adair Bright here as well. They facilitated this conversation, how many months ago was it at this point, Ms. Nassif?
Our first joint session with you all was December 17th.
Okay, so in December we met. It was a great night, excellent. Once we got you started, then I had, I had to reel you all back in, I think, or maybe you had to, oh, no, Donnie was the planning commissioner, you had to reel him in, maybe. I can't remember who, but we now have Dana Arth as the chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome, and thank you for being here. So do you have any words of advice to us to get us started?
Not really.
I watched your planning commission meeting the other day, and you did a great job, so well done. All right, Ms. Nassif, you want to start us off?
Absolutely, thank you so much. We are really excited to be back before you tonight with some draft language and to get your feedback and input on a lot of the areas that we have. We have some questions for you, too. But to bring things together, our goal was to listen to the concerns that we heard. We heard, you know, talk about the quality of development, but also we have a great relationship with our development community right now. So we also, at the same time, while we want to look at some standards and update some requirements, we still want to be a choice that developers choose to work in and a great place to do business in, too. So we're, we do believe we found a pretty
We have our consultant here. We've got Amy Nassif, who you just saw, and Adair Bright here as well. They facilitated this conversation. How many months ago was it at this point, Ms. Nassif?
Our first joint session with you all was December 17th.
Okay, so in December we met. It was a great night, excellent. Once we got you started, then I had to reel you all back in, I think, or maybe you had it, oh, no, Donnie was the Planning Commissioner. You had to reel him in, maybe. I can't remember who, but we now have Dana Arth as the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome, and thank you for being here. So do you have any words of advice to us to get us started?
Not really.
I watched your Planning Commission meeting the other day, and you did a great job, so well done. All right, Ms. Nassif, you want to start us off?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. We are really excited to be back before you tonight with some draft language and to get your feedback and input on a lot of the areas that we have. We have some questions for you, too. But to bring things together, our goal was to listen to the concerns that we heard. We heard, you know, talk about the quality of development, but also we have a great relationship with our development community right now. So we also, at the same time, while we want to look at some standards and update some requirements, we still want to be a choice that developers choose to work in and a great place to do business in, too. So we do believe we found a pretty good balance of that for you all. So tonight, we want to share the framework of everything that we have, what that looks like. And again, we have some areas, those specific entries, where we have some questions for you all as well, and then discuss some next steps, too. So then I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chris Shires of Confluence, who's our consultant. He'll kick things off, and then there's some other specific areas that we'll jump back in on.
All right. Mayor, Councilmembers, and Commission members, thank you so much for giving me another opportunity to meet with you. So we've received that public input. We did our analysis. We received your feedback and input, and so we're back in front of you tonight to kind of give you the overview, the outline of what were the drafts we're working towards, so we can get some critical feedback from you. And so for the presentation, we have a lot to go through. We're going to try to be succinct, but we do want to run through this draft, the outline format, and get those comments and feedbacks. So if you want to interrupt me as we're going along, I think that's fair as well. If you want to save your comments to the end and have some discussion, that works great. But at the end, I want to talk about the next steps, where we go from here and let alone even some flexibility in the schedule. We want to make sure that everybody is very comfortable with the direction we're headed before we're back to the public, back to you for anything to review and adapt. So with that, let's jump right in. So I want to explain a little bit on the outline, so understanding kind of a big picture on how this sits within the code. Looking at two updated sections, a new subdivision two within our code to just talk about building architecture, design standards, and how it applies, the exceptions. And I'm going to go through the details of all these subsections within two. And then a little bit about Section Three, where we get into site. And I know, especially from last time, there was some great feedback for us on things that you're interested in. Those are and will continue to be in process. Your staff has heard you loud and clear and is working towards those. But I do want to just touch briefly on the screening standards, since they are a little more building, generally structure-related. But we're not necessarily here to talk about landscaping or lighting or other site-specific things. Those are definitely in process.
And actually, those are some of the topics that we talked about just at our last meeting on the beautification, the bin rocks. So we do have those notes, and those will be things that we're coming back to on about those site areas. And if questions or things pop up in your mind, let us know. I'll still take notes of those as well.
All right. And so first section, how does this apply? And so we have to be clear within our code, this is applying to all new construction, building additions, modifications of our facade, except we are not messing with the downtown design standards. You already have those in place, so we're leaving that section alone, also leaving out those airport-related structures, those hangars and airport buildings. Now, sometimes there are exceptions, and so if you're adding a building addition, what we're proposing is that if that addition and any subsequent addition stays under a 25% threshold, you just have to be consistent with your current building architecture. We're not trying to bring that whole building into compliance. Regular maintenance and repair, we do want you to maintain your buildings, so of course, that's clearly not regulated by this. But then there are some outs. There are some causes by which the approval authority can grant some deviations and waivers from these standards, because sometimes not all things fit perfectly within any code we develop. So in general, some of those general provisions, and this applies to multifamily, commercial, and most industrial buildings, but does not apply to single-family homes, duplex townhomes, row houses, those smaller residential dwellings, which is kind of typical. We tend not to get too much into those with these general standards. We have some stuff later on in the presentation. We will talk about single-family and row house. So first off, we do want four-sided architecture. That's something in your code today. We want to continue to bring that through. We want those mechanical equipments, those rooftop units, those ground-mounted air-conditioning units, things like that in a commercial setting, screened, trash enclosures for trash dumpsters, receptacles. And we do want buildings to have some good architectural design standards, generally having a top, middle, and a base. And you see the image to the right of the screen kind of explaining that. And then we want the wall and roof articulation, especially on our larger buildings. And so that bottom image is kind of an example of both that roofline going up and down and the wall plane having a bit of movement in and out, as well as some material changes helps break up that monotony without just saying we want it all, say, a solid brick building. When we have some standards that we get into a little more detail about how materials are applied, and it's using materials in an authentic way, so it's not fake, doesn't appear faux, heavy stuff on the bottom, stone and brick on the bottom, lighter materials up top. And then even how we use some of our heavier materials, trying to limit the painting of brick and stone. It's a high-value, very durable material. There are times when it's appropriate to paint, but maybe we just try to limit that. EFIS does have its place, and so what we're suggesting is EFIS can be an allowable exterior building material, and that's that Drive It is a brand name. It's like a synthetic stucco, sometimes we refer to it, that it's only limited to the upper stories or not closer than 10 foot on the first floor of a single-story building. And that we can use veneer stone, veneer brick, thin-set brick, as long as it's done in a manner that it reads and appears to be full-dimensional brick or thicker stone pieces. And again, do interrupt me. I know this is a lot to go through. We kind of hit these highlights before, but just things we're thinking should show up in this code. Again, continuing on these general provisions, a requirement that we do want to see, the appropriate use of trim. Now, not all building architectural styles do need trim, but when it does, that can be a really cost-effective way to make a building really pop and look good. Now, that number eight, building façadeism being discouraged. And how I want to explain that is that image on the left, those are examples of these faux roof elements that are considered façadeism. They have kind of a cheapened look. And so can we discourage that? Because we want our buildings to have this long-term, high-quality value. Again, not trying to needlessly raise cost, but wanting our architecture to look authentic. Now, here's one of the hard ones that we did want to ask your feedback on. What about franchise architecture? And so we have the image on the right as an example. In fact, the bell over the front entry of Taco Bell, that white arch, that is actually a trademarked building element, and so this is definitely a franchise building. So think if this Taco Bell were to close, another tenant moving in here would have a hard time not looking like an old Taco Bell. Is that something that is a concern? Do we want to try to limit or discourage this type of franchise architecture? Or, hey, tell me, Chris, this isn't that big of a deal. I don't think we need to worry about it. That's one we're kind of curious. And we have a few more images, for example, just in case.
Sorry, would you like us, when you have a specific question like this, if you'd like us to stop right here?
Yeah, stop right here. So the thing is, let me frame it first, though, in the terminology that Council might understand better, or at least me. So when I look at the Taco Bell on the right, I think of it two different ways. You're talking about façadeism, which is the look with the colors and the design elements of the facade, which is really tough because of the franchises and, you know, we want people to invest here, especially, you know, certain types of franchises. However, the building itself is very small and is it really reusable? So I want to make sure as we go around, my thought is on that is I want to differentiate between the two because they're two different issues. One is, it's going to look like that as long as it's Taco Bell, but then can we reuse it afterwards? So if you could maybe comment on those types of things. So who would like to start us off? Mr. Kitchens, or Commissioner Kitchens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as the buildings, I think we've had a few examples in Lee's Summit, both sides of that. Now, we have the big old Burger King. That is now what, an orthodontist or dentist off of 291. And then we've had several, such as the old Captain D's that was torn down because it was too small. We have a Seven Brew right there as well. The lot size really depends, makes that all work. Here, we can go with the Pizza Hut, too, even though this is a different one. That is now Chipotle as well. They tore that down. So when we think about the franchise elements, it does add some character to the city. I just think of places in the Mountain West where they have put restrictions on it, and it looks terrible. Makes a whole city without character, without charm. I know people will say, it's fast food. Well, it's America, too. Another element, though, going back to the façadeism, as somebody who's developed out a couple of retail spaces, the reason that we run into that a lot in all cities is because it covers up the AC units on the top. So when we put some restrictions on the facade, on the outside of it, we need to have some sort of option that doesn't break the bank for these guys to put the equipment that is covered up and covered up nicely. If we're going to have them basically build a second story just to store equipment on top, I don't know if I'd be behind that. Now, at the same point, let's classy it up and make it look a lot better. But when we put too many restrictions on it, we kind of get carried away into this model-esque city that we would like to develop, which is great, but we need to be practical. We need to think first, why did somebody build it that way? Because there's usually a pretty good reason why those things existed in the first place. Just food for thought.
So on the facades, you're definitely more flexible, but what about the building size? You said that you're okay with the smaller and the...
So I'm okay with the smaller. I'm actually, the bigger is where it can be reused a little bit better. Like I said, the Burger King over there, but that really depends on the lot size more than anything. If they have a small lot, they're going to put something small. Captain D's was really small. What do we have there, Seven Brew?
I got you. I just wanted to make sure I summarized you correctly.
You're good. Thank you, Mayor. But yeah, it's the larger the lot size, maybe we start looking at square footage for the building that's going to cover it with what we can pertain to that. I know we run into issues when they get too large with too many signs on for the franchises as well. We've run into that several times.
Okay. Councilmember Pryor and then Councilmember Hodges.
Okay, so I actually, I don't like the chain colors that a lot of them do. I like the more uniform colors. I don't think we'll have any problem with businesses still coming here because a lot of the cities, a lot of the nicer cities, like I would consider Lee's Summit being, they have those restrictions and they're developing out just fine. I also think it looks really tacky to have the fake facade on the top that, what's it called?
Just façadeism.
So I think that looks tacky, and I'd like to keep our city not looking super tacky, so I am against that. I would rather, I mean, there's a tactful way to do it. I don't know what it would be, but I guess we'll discuss it further. But I don't like the pictures that I saw, for sure. And is that, so is that also, like with the facade, is that also like sign height or like sign, like would that address the colors?
It's really more like, think of a face left of a building.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know if it was all in one, but yeah.
And they just kind of stick a new element on the top or on the front facade of it, and it looks like it wasn't there originally, that's what façadeism really is.
Yeah, okay.
It's really hard to disguise a Pizza Hut later on.
Yeah.
And the franchise architecture is really, if someone comes in and they build a building, and you know without signage going up, like it's a Pizza Hut, or you know before the sign goes up, it's a Taco Bell. Are we, yeah, are we okay with that?
Well, and even I...
Either way, that's just what...
I feel like even Chipotle and things like that, they've even kind of adopted a classier looking building just on their own. But yeah, I would definitely, I'm definitely against that whole look. And then the Taco Bell on 291 is a perfect example. The Taco Bell, that thing sat there forever and just looked terrible.
Because then it's harder for a new tenant to move in because they have to tear down the building and do a lot more exterior work as opposed to being able to just retrofit and move and do some reminder work, but...
Yeah.
And you know, one thing I do want to make sure is really clear, because I think that's a great comment. So façadeism is not necessarily doing a screen wall. It just has to be done in a very, much less, well, it doesn't quite read like above the Family Dollar or that home store. And so that's something I think we want to be very careful, because that's also a really easy way to screen rooftop mechanicals and very affordable.
It's very easy to what, say that last part?
Screen, so when you have a low-slope roof such as that Family Dollar, often the air conditioner, the air conditioning handling rooftop units are on top of the roof. It's really easy whether we just extend the parapet up or do a second, if you will, parapet kind of screen wall behind. And we wouldn't necessarily consider that façadeism, because it's not gingerbreading, fake gingerbreading on the front facade. It's serving a purpose. It can be stair-step back and kind of wrap on the edges, and often there, it's more of a lighter element.
Would you say it's a way to moderate façadeism?
Yes, mitigate, moderate, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'm challenging myself tonight with these words. Okay. Councilmember Hodges. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pryor, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Hodges.
So I would like to also go away from the franchise architecture, because I think about when I'm traveling to other, like, cities, and what I notice first, especially with some even around us when I'm going through them, is I think, I wouldn't, I'm not going to stop there and eat, because they just look more rundown. And I feel like their architecture is just so specific that it's just, I don't know, but when I'm in cities where they have streamlined it and want to go with their architecture, it just seems like it's more timeless, and I feel like it's classier, and I'm like, I don't even doubt it. I just, it looks nicer, that's where I'm going to go. And I think it would go a long way if we had those more, at least more strict requirements. Not saying they can't use their logo, because I guess that's an important part of who they are, but just classing it up a little bit and going away from all their specific colors. Because I feel like too much color is not a good thing either. It's just too much going on, it's busy, and I think it would just be nice, I would like to get more classy is kind of just where my mind's going on that. And as far as the buildings, I guess I have a question, is if they're coming, and we talk about not wanting to lose business, but if we're going to require them to, say, especially Taco Bell, do a bigger building than they need, wouldn't that deter them from wanting to come? I feel like that might be going a little too far.
Yeah, and we actually don't need to increase the size of the building or the size of lots in order to restrict or mitigate this franchise architecture. So there's definitely way through that, and so we wouldn't need to go there at all.
Okay, but what, so I guess what do you mean when you're saying that, then? So having...
So, I mean, so some of the stuff with the, like Taco Bell, for instance, there are other ways they could mitigate this building, but still keep that same shape.
Okay.
Where it doesn't look like the franchise...
Like the cookie cutter.
Like the cookie cutter. Like the roof item could, element could go away, because that's kind of known for them. They could get drop the stove base. They could change the color to more of like a neutral tones and change the windows. They could do that without having to expand the footprint, do things of that nature that we've had done before.
That makes sense.
In fact, our franchise retailers are the ones that are more adaptable to this, as long as we don't mess with the basic building shape and the basic building size, form, how it functions, because they're very programmed inside, and then they have, you know, store A, B, C, and then it's a different facade. And then they have the one that they get adopted in, you know, whatever fancy town outside of Denver. So they have different versions that they all will follow, as long as your code follows that. What gets harder is if we tell, you know, a Walmart or somebody, we don't want the dock doors in the back here off to the side. There are certain physical interior things that they tend not to want to give on. But I, we can normally, you know, get a lot of movement on the exterior design.
And if they do, when they do, they do their market studies and demands, they want to come here. I've had businesses after businesses change, I had a Dutch Brothers once change seven times because they wanted to be where they were going to go. So there always is flexibility in working with those, with them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields, and then Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. So generally, I feel like we shouldn't put too many limitations on. I think the more restrictive you get, the harder it is to bring in those users. You did ask specifically about the building size, even if that's not necessarily a part of façadeism or franchise buildings. And I think, I feel like half the time, we're telling them not to build too big because we want to have a minimum, you know, open space, maximum FAR, whatever. Like, we tell them, you can't cover more than this much of the lot, you can't be taller than this tall. So we're limiting the size a lot of times with how big they can get, and rarely, I think, with how small they can be. I think it's been pointed out, you know, if we tell them, you need to be more square footage, that just makes it less economical for them to build, so I'm really hesitant on that. And I think it's been pointed out, the lot size will dictate that, too, you know, what they can physically put on there. One of my hesitations here is that I feel like a lot of what we key on when we talk about, like, what that Taco Bell looks like, is that it looks old, it looks out of style. And I don't think there's any way to totally prevent that, because whatever looks fresh and new right now will look old in 20 years. Like, the cool-looking Chipotle that you really like right now will look old to you in 20 years. There's no way around it. You can try to make things more classic, but that's just how it is. It's just like, when you review your kitchen, it's the hottest trend right now on, you know, Pinterest or TikTok or whatever, I'm not cool, I don't know what the kids look at, it will look out of date in 10 years. There's no way... There's no way around that and the more we try to legislate to force them into what we think looks good now, you're still going to end up feeling that way later. So I think that just to try to be more restrained in what kind of requirements we put out there because it's really hard to predict what the taste is going to be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
So we're mainly focused on new construction is what we're looking at right now.
Correct, correct.
Councilmember Shields kind of took a little bit of what I was thinking too is, you look at a lot of these franchise and about every five to 10 years, you walk into Taco Bell and it looks different or you walk into a Hardee's, it looks different. When you talk about interior design and usually if everybody remembers the Arby's, they had the big red awnings outside. Now if you drive by the Arby's, the red awnings are gone. So it's just the little things that they do that I don't think we could really restrict them in a large nature of, yeah, maybe we could get away with some eyebrows and different things like that on the facades and say, hey, you need to stay more to shape, but I don't think we can really tie them down because they're going to come back in five to 10 years and want to redo it. It's just part of their branding.
Okay. I'm going to go Councilmember Lovell, then Councilmember, or Commissioner Fraser.
So I mean, if you just take franchises in general, like, you know, Taco Bell and you look at the iterations of the different buildings that have been built, yeah, they change. I mean, even the one out by our neighborhood doesn't look anything like this. I do think trends change, things change in some cases, but I do believe that there are certain architectural designs and materials that don't, that stand the test of time. And I would be more like a freestanding, well, I'd say if the worst thing is we don't get more fast food, like I don't think that's the end of the world for the city. I think there's a lot of changes coming and this is saying like five, 10 years out. There's a big health movement right now. A lot of these places won't be here. A lot of these places are going to have to change significantly. And so I don't think there's a problem. There are things that we can do from a design standpoint, like you could take the development over by Cooper's Hawk, like there's a Lion's Choice, that Lion's Choice is gone. Something else is going in there. Those are all built fine, somebody's going to come in and redo it or whatever. But what if we took a development and we had a general design theme that, you know, like a development where you have a lot of those things where you can incorporate some design elements that do stand the test of time? And I mean, these buildings down here have stood the test of time. There's, I mean, you can go look at centuries old villages and developments in Europe and other places or Breckenridge or places like that, those things do stand the test of time. So we can't predict the future of what that's going to be, but I think we can, we can put some things in there like, take Oldham Village. There should be a general theme or something element there and I think you see it with a lot of buildings, but then we also have some new fast concept that's storage containers. Like, I mean, that thing's not around, what does that mean? Now that's on someone else to do, but what is that even, I mean, I mean, it's like, it's storage containers and why would we even, why are we doing that? That's their concept, they could build it to whatever financial model they do because it's a real estate play, whatever that might be. I look at like New Longview, like when that CVS went in, there were certain design elements that they worked with them to do to kind of incorporate some of the architecture and design that was there. So I think there's an opportunity when you come in to a development and you think of the whole thing as a whole, that you can create some, utilizing some of these design standards, it's not going to prohibit a Taco Bell from going there, a Chipotle going there or Starbucks, that again, has a chance of looking better over a long period of time and be reusable much easier if those places go out of business. So I, I think this is a, I think is a good direction and like, I mean, not, you take the Arby's or even take like the Andys, like that building that's going in there, I mean, it's got a lot of funkiness to it and 10 years from now, I hope Andys is still there, right? But those things will significantly change and just like McDonald's and some of these other places, so why not just create some uniformity of some design standards that do, that we know last centuries and have a better chance of creating some beauty and some continuity and more longer term possibility for uses, so that'd be my thoughts.
Okay, so I'm going to try to summarize what you just said, very, really succinctly, sorry. But you're for a little bit more restrictions, but not to the extent that you would lose the franchisees. You just, you want to do what Mr. Shire was saying and find, find the version of their, of their franchise that best fits our community, basically.
Yes.
Rather than saying that you want to let them do whatever with their facades and such.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. I think I said I was going to go to Commissioner Fraser next.
So my opinion is, so those of you who know me, I like to let the market adjust itself, to be honest. I don't think we should be in the business of dictating physically how franchises and businesses conduct business, how they build. I will say that per what Councilmember Hodges said, that when you go to different cities, they build differently and I do believe that franchises now are more streamlining what their buildings or what the facades look like. And they're doing it for a number of reasons, I mean, economy, efficiency and that sort of thing. As far as reusing the building is concerned, the example that Councilmember Lovell provided, you know, what is it, Lion's Choice, it used to be on Chipmunks, it's going to turn into Popeyes, I understand, and my, or our challenge with that, we talk about colors as well. And, and, you know, Popeyes is orange. Yeah, I know. It's orange, it's bright, but the same thing with, you know, Andys. Andys 10 years ago wasn't there, they weren't around. So what's it going to look like 10 years from now? I think to the extent that we can put limited parameters and requirements, I think that's fine. I don't want to err on providing too many because I think that may in fact restrict the business that comes into, to our community. I mean, really, we're talking about old versus new. I mean, I've been to newer cities and it looks pretty uniform and you go to the older cities and you've got that Taco Bell with the arches and that sort of thing and it doesn't necessarily look appealing. That doesn't mean it's dirty or anything like that, it's just, it's old and we will have a tendency to continue to move forward with it. So I do like the fact that you are, we are only talking about new business.
Yes.
And new, new construction and new development and not necessarily retroacting in any kind of terms, so.
Okay.
That's just my take.
Very good, thank you. I'm going to keep going and then come back around. Councilmember Carla.
Thank you. So I would agree with limiting, I don't want to take away their ability to use whatever it is that their logo is and what have you, but I do think that we need to have more uniform colors muted, not, you know, one's bright orange and the next one's bright purple and we don't need that. We need uniform colors, buildings as far as we can get. So like Councilmember Lovell said, it can turn over two, three, four times and it's easy to do that without having to rip the whole building down, you know, as long as the building's been taken care of, obviously. But, so I, I am all for doing that and making it more of a streamlined look throughout the city. Even though we, I'm surely will have many franchises throughout the city, I would just like for them to really, and they don't all have to look the same is not what I'm saying, but whatever development area they're in, they need to all coincide with that area and look like the area looks. So that's my opinion, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Mayor Pretem Lovell.
And I won't repeat what's been said already. I think the general themes that I've heard, which I agree with, are we don't want to be very restrictive, super restrictive. And I think investors, developers are building facilities nowadays that have, that could be reusable and could be multifunctional. I think that's just a function of the market, like you were saying. So I don't think we should control that or limit future, you know, growth from that perspective. I do agree, no facadeisms for sure. We don't need that in this community. Quality materials, kind of like Councilmember Lovell said, I think it just comes down to having quality materials. And we can be creative with whatever that means. I mean, more neutral colors, not as gaudy looking colors that maybe Taco Bell might have, but just more neutral, consistent across new developments in our city. And I would agree again, I think having more of a holistic approach, like as a shopping area or shopping center concept, whatever that means nowadays and going forward, it's always evolving. Big box shopping centers are kind of going away. But I use the example in this metro area like Park Place over in Leewood. That's upscale and they had a theme and that theme has been around for 15 years and it still looks great. And the type of tenants that they're attracting are certain caliber. So I think that's what would be good for our community, something like that.
Commissioner Chair Arth.
Thank you. I, I think of, with uniformity, I think of downtown Lee Summit and there's a lot of uniformity in the buildings, but what differentiates a lot of the businesses are the signs and the signs are well made and Fossil Forge has done a lot of those. And so it does give the businesses opportunity to have their branding. I, I think we should respect a franchise's branding, but I like the idea of, of us asking for what we want in our community. This is an opportunity for us to look at how we want colors to be or certain, just the way the structure is, is laid out. And I think we can ask for that because it appears that based on what you've said, that franchises already expect that anyway. They have their set of, and, and this is in no way trying to talk bad about franchises, but if they're looking at cost and they can present a cheaper version of it because we allow it, then, and they're fully prepared to pay more, we should, we should go for it and get what we want. And I think the other side of that is when I've gone to Florida and they do a lot of heavy landscaping, palm trees and things like that, Hawaii, same thing. You can't find businesses, like by just driving by, you can't see them. So we definitely don't want that and plus we don't have enough trees for that. But anyway, I just think it's an opportunity for us to really decide what we, what our vision is and establish those, that to be our standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else want to chime in? You want to go back around? That's fine, we can go back around. I'll just say, I think that what I'm hearing consensus wise, because I'm trying to, and let me just see, Mr. Shire, you and I are on the same page on this. Some are going to lean a little bit less on restrictions, some are going to lean a little bit heavier on restrictions. However, the one common theme I heard was, they certainly aren't worried about restrictions that could make it better and more uniform, color, maybe colors. But we, we still, we still want to stay business friendly. And so I think everybody is a little bit, I think we can find some agreement that we definitely need some more restrictions or we can put in some restrictions, but where we're going to get really push, big pushback is when we say that we want so many that people aren't going to want to invest here or we might get pushed back from others that say if we, if we don't have enough that we're getting that. So is that fair or what do you see?
Mayor, that's exactly how I took it too, that we kind of had a little bit of focus on both sides, but in general, we need some rules. We don't want to be too restrictive, but we don't want to be taken advantage of. We do want to look at the big picture of, you know, quality development and so...
And that really lines up with the whole theme of the entire chapter. So this is wonderful, we definitely have...
I feel the struggle that they, that everyone here has because I like to be, I don't know, I like to be for the business owner, for the person that's investing here, but man, do I like uniform signs. I mean, I like uniformity, I like the more subdued colors. Here I am wearing a different suit tonight than I ever wear.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Yeah, I never wear, I never wear anything but black, but, or blue, so this is blue. So, but then I had Councilmember Shields tell me that my suit's going to be out of style in 10 years, so I'm teasing you.
Two years.
You're wearing a tan suit. All right, so Mr. Shire, is that fair? I'm going to go back around, let them chime in though, because I don't want to speak for them if they want to add some more comments.
Message loud and clear, that's exactly what we're hoping to hear is that kind of feedback, so we can go back, update this section and then bring something back to you.
All right, I'm going to go back around. Councilmember Pryor wanted to say something earlier, would you like to chime in?
Oh, thank you. No, I just wanted to say, kind of what Commissioner Arth said, that downtown Lee Summit, as long as you use the good building materials, I don't know that it ever truly goes out of style. I personally prefer the older buildings. I love the older look, I love buildings with character, but I like it when it's done the right way and classy the first time and then I feel like it stands the test of time. I don't feel like downtown Lee Summit, other than a few modifications that they've had to do, I don't feel like it's ever been out of style because they built a quality building and it looks good. And they use building materials that have stand the test of time. So I think that, that we could, there's, we can definitely do it a nice way and honestly, if, if a business doesn't want to adhere to any codes that we have, not just necessarily these, but any codes, then maybe they don't need to be here. So, yeah, but that's all, thank you.
Well, no, I don't want to go down that far because I think that as planning commission and city council, we've sent back many of an applicant and made them make changes and we let them walk away from the table, right? We let, we let them, if they don't want to adjust, but I want to make sure we frame it as in, you know, we want you, but this is, this is how we want you to, yeah, to do it, yeah. I just want to be careful to do that. Did you want to chime back in?
Yeah. Some of, some of what I hear, like kind of references to specific areas or specific developments or uniformity in an area, I feel like that's not necessarily something that's accomplished through our city codes overall. I feel like that's something that's accomplished through things like overlay districts in a specific area or through architectural review and design standards in a particular shopping center. Like they have their own covenants that out, that lay out what things need to look like and who needs to approve the design and I feel like when you're getting to real specifics about trying to get a uniform look in a neighborhood or an area, that's more where you go and I'm just nervous about us putting this stuff, trying, trying to make the entire city uniform as opposed to make certain areas like a downtown or a New Longview have a certain aesthetic to them, so.
Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Shire? What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's a, a great comment. So at least the direction we're headed with this draft to present to you is not trying to push any architectural style since this is something citywide and you already have within your code and within your ability is to do a, you know, a special plan district, a PUD, kind of like Longview where that, often the developer wants to set up an architectural style and I like how it was said earlier with unifying elements and features. That's great and I think you already have that in your code. We're talking in general for the many, many buildings that are not built as a planned development, that are one offs or in one area, just a base design standard, but again, not pushing any one architectural style. I think that's really important. I think that's something we also heard is liking, what I heard was more of the muted quality versus really trying to push one architectural style or, because you wouldn't want that just all over the city, one design, of course.
Okay. All right, coming back around, Commissioner Kitchens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things on this, I feel like a lot of what we're talking about is already captured in the UDO. And there are a lot of elements that we're looking at here with design, materials and things like that, that we already have gone through quite a bit. I'm worried, and I would like to see, you know, exact language, obviously we're not there yet, but I do worry about putting a specific requirement that would be citywide on these things. As Councilmember Shields spoke and I was thinking the exact same thing, those communities that we talked about having a, a design element in them, that kind of takes care of itself. I can't see the streets of West Pryor allowing something in that, in that shopping center that didn't go along with that, that style. What I do worry about, and to talk to the Taco Bell off of 291, a lot of times this is driven by the developer or the owner themselves. I know because I put a bid in for that Taco Bell. I got turned down for that because they, they wanted a certain thing to go in there and they wanted, they wanted a certain building to a certain spec to get certain rents out of it. If we look now, that building is no longer there, but that, that unit's still vacant, that, that plot is still vacant. There's nothing there. So I worry if we put too much on there, we start to pick and choose according to the design element, because I'm hearing a lot of people say, we like Andys, I love Andys too. Andys has flashing lights all over it. Obviously, we're not going to... too. Andy's has flashing lights all over it. Obviously, we're not going to allow that on a Taco Bell, but at the same point, we have to be a little bit careful when we do that, because we do something city-wide like this. It really does take away from character in some areas. And I know we look at the Taco Bell and the facades, yeah, we can all agree on those, but at the end of the day, it becomes something that might be a little bit too past what we already have. And the UDO does cover a lot of what we're talking about right now in our review process of commission and council. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pryor.
I was just going to comment further, that it's been my experience on planning that the developers, it takes care of itself. And I will point to an example we had a couple of weeks or so ago, when we sent a business owner back and said, can you make a couple of changes to the facade, you know, and that sort of thing, so that it's more aesthetically aligned with the particular area. And they did willingly. And so they came back, and, you know, that's successful, and it's going to go forward. So I think in some aspects, instead of doing it completely city-wide, the particular areas that I think we're really looking at, we'll correct and work themselves out, so. Thank you.
And I think, too, also, something that we're seeing is a lot of the things that might be coming in the draft, or to your point, things that we are getting already in lots of areas, but this provides clarity and transparency as well, which helps the developers, too, when they're walking in. But that's great feedback and great suggestions and good points, too. We should make sure we don't want to go too far.
Very good. I think we came together pretty close on that.
Yeah. Well, and if you're ready, I can continue on with the next few slides here. So continuing on on those general provisions, and so for commercial retail buildings along their street-facing facade, instead of saying we want, you know, a certain glass percentage for all buildings, or all retail buildings, we're only talking about that pedestrian, what we call a view zone. And so this is where we identify the, you know, eight-foot area along that street-facing facade for those retail front doors, this eight-foot zone, that we want at least 50% glass, 50% clear fenestration. And if there's any doors, and often sometimes even the active restaurants and indoor/outdoor spaces, we'll do an overhead door, but it's be, you know, be mostly glass, 75%, to really make the front facade more inviting. Frankly, if you look at even the evolution of, say, a QuickTrip, a QuickTrip is now there. They used to have very limited amount of glass in their front facade, and now they've since opened up the buildings, knowing that visitors, customers, want to be able to see into a storefront to feel safe to enter, to actually make it a little bit more interesting from the street. So one recommendation there. And then we have a little bit of language that we have in there, just addressing street-facing overhead doors. Sometimes those can be a big distraction in a commercial district or an office district. They are a necessary evil, so we're not saying no. We're saying, if we can, let's put them to the back and the rear. And if not, they're going to be street-facing for whatever reason. Say, an auto center that can't, say, be perpendicular to the roadway, hey, make those mostly glass or 50% glass, recess them. That's very, very common. We do see that a lot. And we're also working on some regulation to deal with those storage buildings, you know, the self-storage facilities. Can be a really great thing, can be done really, really appropriately. They often want to be where the action is, close to their, often us residential customers, but they can also be very distracting to a neighborhood with a little bit too much of interior lighting and some other things. And then when we're using canopy, I'm sorry, awnings and canopies, anopies, I put the word together, that those being at a pedestrian scale, being of high-quality durable material is really kind of one of those low-hanging fruit, kind of no duh when you look at it. It really helps improve the building without just raising costs needlessly. And a lot of our retailers really understand that. All right. And if you're ready, I can keep going on, or you can always stop me.
Yes, we've got a question for you. Councilmember Shields.
On the street-facing overhead doors, does that apply to, like, restaurants that are putting in those, like, garage doors that allow them to kind of do the fake patio experience when it's a nice day?
Yes, and in this case, this is not discouraging something like that, because often those are predominantly glass anyway. That's what those restaurants want. They want that visibility. And so they are spending the money on the mostly glass.
Do those still have to be recessed like that's talking about, or how does that work?
Yeah, and it's still that desire that we do recess those, so it's just a punch into the wall plane. And so that's something, you know, we could, if there's a compelling reason why four foot's too deep, you do have that flexibility within the application of the code. Maybe it's only a foot or two recess. So there's a lot of different ways we can look at that, and we can even kind of come back and say, in that case, you know, maybe we don't need the full four-foot recess.
So I've seen more of those popping up, like, especially in our downtown, and I think it's a really great feature.
And they're fun.
So I'd hate to limit that.
Hey, good comment. Take a quick note here. All right.
Mayor Patim Lopez.
You know, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of going back to the previous conversation, but you mentioned QuickTrip. And this is just something that... I'm kind of a geek when I drive around town or other parts like everyone else, goes, travels wherever we go, but QuickTrip specifically. If you go, we've talked about this, and I was out there last week again, and I'm like, I hope our QuickTrips that are being built on 50 Highway look somewhat like the one over on 107th and Noll. That has got to be the fanciest QuickTrip I've ever seen. And I've seen them in Arizona, Oklahoma, Texas. That's the fanciest QuickTrip I've ever seen. The canopy, the columns that hold up the canopy are all wrapped with beautiful ornamental brick facades. The entire building is wrapped, you know, 360. And like I said, I don't know, not to put pressure on our staff, but that's got to be the best-looking QuickTrip I've ever seen. And we should have those kind of standards. And it comes down to material. So that was my point.
Yeah, and what's been fun to see, the evolution of some of our retailers, such as like a QuickTrip, it's a three-sided entry, so they have the three main doors in, and then it's really glass along most of those three sides. And it's really to invite customers in. Now, probably not a big secret, most C-stores don't make money selling gas. They make money selling stuff inside the store. They really want you to come inside. And so that's why I think we've seen that with Come and Go, QuickTrip, to some extent Casey's, kind of making that evolution. I think we'll see that more so with QuickStar. Trying to think who else is in your market. But yeah, I think that's a good point. I like to use them as an example, because that's not how they always were. Okay, all right. One thing we included, one of the two things included in your packet was a table summarizing exterior materials, and I kind of want to explain that a little bit, just with this one slide. And the purpose of this is to kind of take the big categories of major exterior building material and give them kind of a scale, a ranking, if you will. You know, one being that top-tier, very durable, you know, top-of-class building material, two and three kind of being the mid-range, and then four being the, kind of the lower-scale, the less durable material. And so one and two are mainly those top-desirable street-facing facade materials. That three, we kind of can put on all the secondary side walls. And then four, we generally are having that in the back, or if in an area where we're wanting the four-sided architecture, it's more of a trim element. What's nice about doing this is a table. As a new material maybe comes on the market, it can be ranked in here. And over time, as your value, you may value a certain type of material or look greater or lesser, this code can be updated. And so we slide things up and down the classification. But this is a way to kind of make a few more materials that maybe we're a little less comfortable with right now, or less familiar with, we can actually add it to our list and say, this is what we mean by some of the metal panel, the architectural-grade metal panel. And that was something we heard from your building community, is can we allow more of that in our community? Can we allow even some of the softer materials as elements higher up on the building facade, up on those upper stories where you don't see it as much? And that's even your thin-set brick and your other stone veneers. And so metal panel, I think some, it's something that's definitely evolved, and there's different grades. So throughout this table, when possible, we do give a brand name. Not that we're recommending a brand name, but more for an example. And that's a lot to help the development community kind of understand, oh, that's what the city means. Over time, those examples probably will change, but we kind of want to make it both for the educated builder, developer, architect, as well as frankly, for the rest of us that are, that don't do this.
Can I add to? So right now in our code, we have this much talk about what the materials are that we like and we don't like. And what we heard as part of the way to do this also is, we want flexibility for developers and development community and the business owners to come in, and we want them to be able to design their sites. But we want to have some standards in place that we don't currently have. And the best way to do this is if we have classifications of materials, that helps us have a greater look at the materials being used, but also it lets us do things like we'll see in a little bit here in a presentation of, say, we want a mix of materials. What do we mean by a mix? You know, and so we also want that top, middle, and bottom, you know, the facades that we have, the different planes. This allows us to be able to do that. Also, because we don't want to over-regulate things, right? We still want to stay that community of choice. What we did not do is we did not include percentages to dictate what percentage of materials they should or should not use. There are some cities in the metro that do that. Developers don't like it very much. You know, it's one thing that we heard from them. They didn't mind and they understand having the table of classes, but dictating, you must use 20% class one, you must use 30% class two, that loses a lot of that flexibility for the different buildings and the different styles. And so we did not include and go that far. We just said, use the classifications, use a mix. And you'll see later, it might say, commercial buildings, use a mix of class one, two, and three. But we're not going to tell you what those materials are, so there's like a lot to choose from. I hope that makes sense. And so, like I said, there's a couple municipalities in Casey Metro that do those percentages. It doesn't work real great. So this will bring us up not to be kind of the lower standards of the whole metro, but it'll bring us up more in line, but not too far, which was our goal. And this is just one page. The PDFs in your packet has all six pages of all the different building materials.
And then for the next spreadsheet that was included in your packet, was how we apply, what are those standards for buildings. And in this case, instead of saying it's, hey, in this zoning district, we want the following things, it's back to the building type. And so in the first example, there are single-family residential, single-family homes, two-family homes, although very limited, attached residential. So tend to think town-owned row houses, quadplexes, multifamily, think apartments, and so forth through there. In some of the cases, say industrial, it is an industrial building in an industrial zoning district, so it's not somebody saying, my building's industrial, but I'm in your highest class retail district. No, that's still cheating. And so this is a way that, to allow the architectural standard, really to fall back to, how's the building being used, because that has everything to do with how it is designed. And then, for example, I will start with the first one. We can go through the table here in a second, but we did want to talk about the, kind of the tough one right off the bat, is maybe some thoughts on just a little bit to do with single-family.
So we don't want to, this is an area, and best practices dictates, and, you know, codes around the country, is that if you have architecture and building design requirements or standards, you don't have that same level of restrictions on single-family or duplexes. If you do, you lose that character, you lose the personality, you lose the floor planning on the inside. Nobody wants that. And you also lose that, the design in high-quality homes. So it's very, very limited. In fact, this will be like the only, the one page. And so we have had one discussion with the HBA and collaborated with them already, and we're going to be scheduling another meeting with them, too. But some of the, just the big areas, the two or three big areas, is just, what do we do with those, with the garages when they really kind of start to swallow that front facade? Just putting a restriction or a cap on that max. And the current draft proposal is that the garage width should not exceed more than 50% of that street-facing facade. And that's also in line with what we typically see and what typically is being built. But if you have to, and if you do, especially on a more narrow lot, just add a couple more elements to it. And that's something, again, we've been seeing and we're getting already, but that'll be something also that we discuss, and just want to see what the HBA's feedback on that is. And then there might also be one or two other things with just the recessing of the front door. On the picture on the right, it kind of shows it best. Sometimes it'll be the floor plans where the door kind of gets swallowed almost. And so there's ways, do you either want to put a maximum on that, or do we want to, when you have that, have a little bit more articulation, even articulation just on the garage door itself. But that's really the only areas we're looking at, kind of touching the single-family residential side. But if you had any thoughts or feedback on that, that'd be appreciated, too. And like I said, we'll be scheduling a meeting with the HBA as well, a second one.
And if I can add one thing, and our thought was, is maybe this is only for 60-foot-wide lots and larger, not for, say, our 55 or 50-foot lots.
And that 60-foot wide lot is our RP1 district.
I mean, I think everyone here is afraid to limit housing options right now in this climate. So to make homes more attainable, we hate to mess with the garage too much, even though, even though I would love to see less garages, or less garage frontage. But I think, you know, I think right now, the way we've been handling it is, I mean, I haven't heard, I haven't seen us go through any struggles with that right now. So I think we're staying the course on that. We're not going to, I mean, I like the idea of, once you get skinnier, not saying that you're going to do less than, so that's keeping the 55-foot, I think you said?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So once it gets, okay, the skinnier the lot goes, then the more likely that garage is going to take up more than 50%. But maybe on the skinnier lots, we don't have that standard. That way, you have the option of a floor plan, that, they're shotgun-style homes, you know, whatever you want to call them. What do you call them, Mr. Shire?
Well, yeah, shotgun is, yes.
They're deeper, they're like this, facing the road, instead of a house built like this.
Yeah, that's it, exactly.
And right now, it only applies to 60-foot and larger, so.
Yes, Councilmember Shields.
I guess I don't really see why we need to do this, if it's not a big issue, and I don't really care if somebody's door is recessed or not. I would say, if we're concerned about how wide the garages are, we could reduce our parking requirement to a single-car garage in all these residential districts, because that would be a lot less frontage taken up. Hey, look, I live downtown. There are plenty houses that either don't have a garage or have a single car, and we survive just fine.
I've also sold a lot of houses in Kansas City that had no garage, but, you know, I don't know that I want that.
So, and I think, to be fair, we would like to talk to the HBA and just see what they tell us. I think they'll give us some good, great feedback, too.
We're about to blow up with conversation, I think. Councilmember Rader.
No, I'll be good. I was just going to ask, Amy, is this thing working?
Yes.
Okay. This is a question about the lot sizes. Didn't we approve a 35-foot lot at some point?
We did, just in December.
Okay, only in December. And was that in a specific area, or was that overall just, okay, you can build a subdivision, a 35-foot lot?
Two different ways. Most of our districts, you're allowed to ask for a reduction, where we also have the cluster development option now for 35-foot wide, and then we added the single-family, allowance of single-family homes into our E4 district, which wasn't allowed before, and that's a 35-foot wide lot.
And they're classified as an RP4?
It's RP4.
Okay. That's all I wanted to ask.
If somebody wants a bunch of garages, then maybe we can get a bunch of glass.
We talked about that. I mean, let us massage and work on this, and talk to the home builders, too.
Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. Well, this actually doesn't have anything to do with this, but, so like, industrial areas, is there an exception to, like...
There may be, and two more slides.
Oh, okay, okay.
Spoiler alert.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that segue.
Commissioner Kitchens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with Councilmember Shields with some of this, on the door being recessed in. I think we're dictating style again. City has a lot of houses from a lot of different decades. I don't know if that's necessarily where we need to go. I get the garage thing, though. I really do. I like that you're limiting it to only larger lots, though. I might even go a size up on the lot size, too, and make it a little bit bigger, but that's neither here nor there. But let's keep it minimal, no matter what we do. And the HBA has a great call, meeting with them. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
All right. Just a few more slides here, and I'll go through these a little bit quick. You do have them in your packet, but I... You do have them in your packet, but I just kind of want to explain. And so, now, we're back to by building type. And you can see, single-family residential, we're talking nothing about what are those, you know, exterior building facades? If it's a legal-rated material, it can be a siding. Your building code does cover that. And so, we're not doing anything particular. It's not until we get attached residential, so think townhomes, rowhouses, quadplexes, things like that, that we want that street-facing facade to at least have three different building elements, three different building materials. One of them could be glass. So, if they've got windows, they've got one of them taken care of. And so, just add two more from the materials class. The other recommendation in this is that each unit, its facade is a little bit different than its neighbor, so that you can understand that that's what you live, that's your address, where you live, you know, what you own or rent, distinguishing from its neighbor. And then, just some standards on the roofing, nothing to be too particular about, but just some things are pretty common. That next one below it, multifamily, so think apartments, get a little more specific. And in this case, we're saying, yeah, on that street-facing primary facade, we want three different Class 1 and 2 building materials. So, anything from the 1 and 2 list, of which windows, again, making up at least half that facade. So, some quality materials, but not the whole facade, not all of it, but just a good substantial amount. On those sides facades, we still want to then, in essence, restrict that Class 4 material. And you can kind of see from the list, the few things we had on that. We do want some of the wall articulation. So, every 80 feet of building frontage, we want that wall plane to change in some manner. We are suggesting that we prohibit at the elevated or open walkways, open stairways, that we do want main entries covered, projected, some way to differentiate, this is how you enter the building, quality roof materials. And then, a little bit higher standard on, or softer standard on the roofs, that the roof plane does have a break at about 100-foot. And so, any, that kind of concept repeats all throughout these types, but does change depending on the building. So, if we flip to non-residential, and I know that can be confusing, non-residential use in a residential zoning district, but think church, school, institutional use is appropriate, and often, we do see in even a single-family district. Again, some minimums on that street-facing facade, some minimums on the other facades, that wall articulation, that roof articulation, and wanting some type of a clear building entryway with a cover or a projection or being recessed. And then, they do duplicate just a little bit. And this is also allow you a little bit of flexibility, that this is where we can push and change things. And so, if there's something we over time don't like, or want to get less restrictive or more restrictive, you've got the code format to kind of do it quickly. Again, material standards, here's where, what we've heard is a little bit on that minimum building height. A single-story retail building with just a little more height can look pretty substantial and really good compared to something that's maybe a little too squatty on the site. Wall articulation, entry roofing, and again, that roof articulation. All right. And then, office civic buildings, very consistent. Mixed-use buildings. But I want to note that for downtown, we are referring to the existing downtown design standards, no changes. And then, industrial, and this is where Amy's going to come running back up. Industrial buildings are a much softer standard. So, industrial buildings in an industrial zoning district, just a little bit softer, just a couple of elements on at least a quarter of the facade, a little less limitation on those secondary facades. And then, only that wall articulation, trying to break it up at that 150-foot interval. And then, the last one, I think, Amy, if you want to cover, so we do have those specified metal building locations, again, kind of even dropping that standard, making that a little bit easier, yet a little less substantial.
Thanks. All I keep thinking about is restaurants now, because we talked about all the franchise. And I really want Lion's Choice, because we're, I've read it up. I know, I was thinking, I went after it, liked it, though. So, use of metal in industrial buildings. So, we had some, we had a code regulation previously, and that code regulation basically only allowed the use of metal in these specified areas. So, every other developer and application that came in the door was not allowed to use it. And over 90%, close to 95% of our applicants in development who came in had to go through and get a modification or a waiver. And so, when we started seeing that, we were like, hey, there's an opportunity here that we need to look at our code and our code requirements. So, we did meet with C E D C, and staff had presented a recommendation to where we are today. And the C E D C recommended a three-tier approach. And we knew the whole time that that was going to be temporary until we were able to come before you, the C E D C, at this point. But we really wanted to help the 90% of our customer base not have to go through those extra steps. So, our current temporary requirement is a three-tiered approach, where you can still use metal, you can use it up to 40%, and that's approved administratively. And I should say that buildings in this metal building area currently, it was, their plans were approved administratively by staff. So, it was 40% of any facade, the original was 40% of any facade would be allowed by right that you could use metal. And then, anything beyond that would be approved by staff on that temporary basis. Or if it was going through rezoning, then that would go through city council, planning commission. With these discussions of C E D C and what happened, what was approved at city council was that 40% of any facade was fine, but then, if you go up to 75%, that would require planning commission approval. And then, beyond that would go to city council. So, that is where we were today. So, knowing coming back here now, before you, our recommendation for moving forward with the new code, and I should say, since December, when we adopted the new standard, we've had about 13, 18? 18 projects. All of them but one have run into an issue in a concerned area. But all the other, the 17, have not had to have any concerns, and they haven't had to go through the extra step of the modification. But we have had one, and we do recognize, we want to, we need to put something back in for certain areas. So, staff's recommendation with our consultant on this new draft would be to have a metal building area still in our code, but require that entryways should be articulated. And that could be, just be with an awning or some kind of cap or something over the door, which when we go out to those areas and drove around, almost every single building has that currently. And then, the primary facade or the front facade require three different materials from any classification group. So, it could be metal, glass, siding, it could be EPHIS, concrete, brick, whatever developer chooses. And then, the side and the rear facades, no requirements. And you can just kind of see, from where we were previously, it was allowed metal on the front only, but there was, you could do an entire, you could basically do an entire building on all the facades with nothing but the metal. So, we were trying to balance what we've heard from you all and what the development community has requested, and bring up the bar just a smidge, but also make it a little bit less onerous than what it is today. So, just wanted to get thoughts or feedback on that, or if we're heading in the right direction, you all would like us to be heading with that.
Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I just want to ask, when you say no requirement, no requirement on the side and rear facades, but what if the side faces a highway or something where people, I mean, or a road that, you know, people, it's well-traveled? So, what do you, I mean, you still going to not have that requirement where it doesn't look very good, because it's just in metal?
No. So, primary facade will be defined, is defined in our code as the main entrance to a building, or if it's street-facing.
So, you could have more than one?
So, you could have more than one primary facade.
Good question.
Councilmember Shields?
I just want to say, I appreciate this, because I've said so many times, if we're going to grant a modification, every time someone comes with a particular design element or whatever it is, we should just change our code, and we're doing that, and I'm happy, so.
Great. Councilmember Prior, and then Councilmember.
I just wanted to say that I really like your recommended updates. I agree with them. And then, so this, you know, the business that has emailed us, will that, will these recommended updates, will that satisfy them, too? Will they still be able to do initially? That'll be, okay.
That person in that business was able to just go straight to planning commission, one-and-done meeting, I believe, with their last update. We're actually still waiting for them to finalize stuff, but we're trying to get them to just go to planning commission, so only be like a three-week process. With this update, it would be administrative approval.
Okay, good. That's, yeah, that makes me happy.
Still, it's just a smidge higher.
Yeah, just, yeah. So, I like, I like these a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you. And I just have a quick follow-up to Councilmember Rader. And you said that it can be more than one primary. Is that defined in the code? So, that there is no question about that? If you're on a street, but your back is to the highway, we still don't want it looking horrible, right? So, they will understand that both sides have to look good?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. Last slide. So, next steps, what do we do after this? Definitely appreciate everybody's feedback tonight. We're going to do some code redrafting. We're going to make some edits and changes. And we want to reach out to some of the stakeholders we met with when we first started the process. We do want to meet with the home builders, hear them on their thoughts and ideas, and then finalize that to then bring back for the official review and approval process. But...
But, yeah, so, would you all like us to, when that final draft is done, would you like another joint session, or would you like us to work, or just schedule for planning commission public hearing, which then comes to you all, or what would you like?
I really felt like we were on the same page tonight on most of these issues. I mean, we had slight variances, you know, more mitigation versus less mitigation, but I think we kind of talked through where we are. And so, unless I hear from council, though, if council feels different and commissioners, we can come together. Otherwise, we can just take it through planning, and then it would come to council after that.
Planning commission public hearing, and then two city councils are public hearing.
That's what we're used to. They do all the work, and then we just, gets to us, and we tweak it.
This is very helpful. It gave us, it helped us like finish that draft up, and there was some just spots we weren't exactly sure, and wanted to make sure we're hitting the goals and desires that you all had, so we really appreciate it.
Councilmember Lowell?
Thank you. I remember a slide back there where you had different classes of...
The table?
Yeah, keep going. And so, like, I'll just pick on multifamily. So, and then, I think what we're saying here is like, we're not going to assign a percent, but they've got a, the idea would mean they meet, what was, what was your suggestion, like two of the three?
So, have three different materials picked from the 1 and 2 standard? And that's why it's going to be really important, and definitely look at that table, on how do we classify something as sometimes controversial as EPHIS? Is 3 appropriate? Do you want it as a 2? Probably not. But not, not a 4, because we do use it a lot as a material. So, think 4, very limited application, 1 and 2, your top application, and 3, kind of your middle of the road, like, I'll just say it, like an EPHIS. But maybe not vinyl, vinyl siding.
Not necessarily getting so into the weeds on that, but more of, what current multifamily projects do we have that are currently existing that wouldn't qualify? Yeah, because what I want to see visually is, here's what this is, but it should have been something more like this, because again, in my mind, I'm wanting to get to something, especially in these giant, dense units with 200-plus people, that we are, like, I want to know what that's going to look like with these new improvements. Like, this one wouldn't have qualified, and they would have had to come back with something like this. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Because that visually says, like, now we are softening these up somehow, where we're putting more elements into them that we think deferred maintenance over time gives them a better chance of, like, that would be, that would be interesting to kind of see what that looks, not to like, but it could say, like, this is what this might have looked like had we had this, and we don't think this actually prohibits them from doing it, or there's a cost associated with it that makes it more difficult. But I think that would be important to me visually, seeing like if there's a way to see like what might qualify and what wouldn't have qualified in the past. And then, the other thing I would say, and I don't know how we incorporate this, but I always come back to the incentives. And the idea is like, especially when there's incentives, that gives us a little more freedom in the framework of what we're asking them to do outside of this, I believe, because you're getting into a situation where there's some sort of incentive. One of the things we always see with multifamily is the pilot program, and every single one that comes before us is different. And everybody's got a different model of why they need a certain dollar amount or they don't. I don't know that we, we make the best judgment that we can, like, why does this one need a lower one than the other one did? And again, I don't, I'm just kind of just talking here theoretically, like, if you wanted to, and we don't, like, I've heard we don't want to put restrictions, but like, if there's a higher pilot or a lower pilot, and it, and it comes in and nails off like some of these, like, the more expensive materials, like, that's our bare minimum if you need that pilot. And if you wanted to jump back up, like, where we actually have more say and control in what we're doing with the pilots, first of them come to us, because we don't really get into the finance, we get into the finances, but we don't really get into the finances of, like, why does that pilot have to be that for yours, but this other one came in and it was much higher? And so, I get the property tax move and things like that. Again, I'm just kind of getting to something, I don't know if that can be incorporated or a way for us to learn better. It just would equip us more on council to understand when they're asking for a certain level on the incentive. Like, now, we've got like a tier up here that says, like, well, this needs to be this to qualify for that tier. Anyway, I was just, that was just something I was thinking of, not putting those restrictions, but saying like, if there's an incentive request that's a little bit higher, then it needs to hit these buttons for us.
Okay. We got some discussion on this one. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree 100% with what Councilmember Lowell's saying. I think maybe the place that belongs, though, is in our incentive packet guide, because I do agree 100%. If people are coming to us and they want incentive to be able to make whatever their building happen, I think they need to be at the very top end of the quality standards, and not bringing us anything lower than that and asking us to help them build a lower-quality building. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
I'm not sure how I feel about putting that in, but I do agree that if it goes in, it probably belongs in the incentive policy, and something like a most favorable consideration we give into projects that demonstrate such and such. So, that's, I'd like to have the discussion. I'm not sure where I land on that, because we're saying we want more taxpayer dollars to go to this, and I don't know that taxpayer dollars towards making a building look prettier. I don't know. I want to have the discussion.
Okay. Yeah, no, it'll be, it'll be a good discussion, because I really, I don't want to get in the weeds either, but I can't say 100% agree, because we, but yet, I agree. In other words, if there's incentives involved, we should use that to the best of our ability to get the product we want. I get that. But when it comes to pilots, I feel like staff fights and fights and fights to get the highest amount for the pilot possible that Jackson County would assess it for, so. Mr. Dunning, can you help me?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I was just conversing with Mr. Bushack, and to my knowledge, I don't think we've used pilots in a way to incentivize certain design standards or qualities, right? You're correct. We've always said, if we're going to do a fixed pilot, how's the county valuing these? What does our data tell us? And where do we fix that pilot to be commensurate with where it would be if it were on the tax rolls?
I feel like, though, Councilmember Lowell's referencing the percentages that are different from development, development, because they're using so many different tools, and then they end up with a different percentage. And when that happens, I think we should try to leverage it for the best quality product we possibly can get.
Right. And, yeah, those pilots keep shifting because of how the county...
But the pilots are probably the hardest one to negotiate. Is that true, Mr. Bushack? Like, negotiate on behalf of? I don't know. Can you add to the conversation? I don't, like I said, I don't want to go down the incentive path tonight, but...
Let's do it. I mean, I hope, I don't know where I land on it, either. I think it just would be a good conversation. It's obviously not for here, but if we're talking about design standards, I think they play...
Well, I want Mr. Bushack to be kind of prepared for it when we have that conversation, but I can put him on the spot for a second.
Yeah, so, to make sure, to clarify, is the question tying heightened performance standards to incentives? Is that generally what we're talking about?
That's generally, but I got caught up when he said pilots, so, yes. Generally, I think that's...
That's the most common one on the whole thing.
Yeah, so, when it comes to fixing pilots...
Now, go to the general incentives.
Right, so, I think, right, I think to take that topic into the more general discussion and tie it to the economic development incentive policy, which is what Councilmember Carlisle, I think, referenced. Yes, we could start to talk about changes to the incentive policy and tying the incentives, not necessarily just pilots, but all the different types of incentives where appropriate to heightened performance standards and better quality materials, architectural enhancement, things like that. That's, that's a very appropriate topic.
Hey.
Look how easy that was.
Nice. That was easy.
Well, he made me.
Councilmember Funk?
Just to, uh, thank you, Mayor. Just to get Ms. Nassif fired up here for a minute, because we were arguing Royals and Cardinals earlier. I think it would be important that our planning commissioners knew if there was an incentive on a project prior to them talking about design standards.
That's because you were on the planning commission recently. And you're, you're, you're just welcoming, oh, very big burden on your former fellow commissioners. I know that, that they all feel that way, but that is a whole nother discussion on it. I, I really, I really wanna think about that one. Me personally, I really wanna think about if we're really gonna do that to, um, to the commissioners. And then also, like, like you're empowering commissioners that are not elected to make subjective decisions that we get held accountable for when we make those decisions. So I don't know. I, I just, to me... Did you hear all this, Mr. Bushack? Or are you, you're not paying attention? You're always paying attention.
We're actively listening.
I'm definitely listening and we're talking about that topic.
Save me, because Councilmember Funk is bringing up something that is just like a big can of worms.
I would think if they're making a decision on the design standards and we're going to hold them at a certain design standard, if there's an incentive, they should be aware of what they're holding them to. Doesn't have to have a discussion on the incentives. We've had this conversation many times. They just need to be aware.
Yeah, so, um, two thoughts. One is the general thought that I've provided to the planning commission in the past, which is any project that's in front, this is how I generally view the issue of incentives when it comes to the planning commission and their, their role in the planning process. Every project that comes before the planning commission, I think this is probably a true statement. Every project that comes before them still needs financing. And almost every project, the financing is going to be contingent upon the zoning and the other entitlements being completed by the city. That financing could either, it's usually private financing, or it could be a mix of private and public financing. But all of the financing still needs to be secured after the zoning occurs. So regardless of whether it's private financing or public financing or a mix of both, the planning commission's still making the exact same land use decision. They're not making an incentive decision. They're not making a financeability decision. They're making a land use decision. However, what, what Councilmember Funk just mentioned would become an issue if we do amend the policy and start to tie incentives to enhanced architectural standards and those sort of things. So we'll have to have that discussion.
Okay, yeah, we, just keep in mind that like, what we have going with this planning commission and this council is a good thing. We honor the work that the, the planning commission does. And I can tell you that that is a great thing that hasn't always been done and isn't always done in other cities. And so I wanna make sure we keep that culture. And then when we start introducing these types of things, I just wanna be careful that we can maintain that culture over time. So that's, it's, I know it sounds really deep, and it is, because like, I don't have to worry about that kinda stuff very much with you all. And then when you introduce something like this, then all of a sudden, um, well, I, the council members can tell you how much we get lobbied ahead of time before they apply when it comes to incentives. So now we're bringing you into the fold too, which is really interesting. Councilmember, help me, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just, I'm not, I'm not asking or thinking that they should have to think about the incentive in any way. I think that they should just be able to say, look, we know what you're asking for here, and this is what you're saying here. But no, leaving here, we're approving this, yes, but if you want incentive, it's either A, yeah, this is good enough, or you're gonna have to be better. You know, I'm not saying that they need to look at the incentive and then compare it to the project at all. I just think that all the developers coming through, even coming through planning commission, need to know and understand that if you're going from here, planning commission, to the city council, and we've approved this, but then you go ask for incentive, they may not approve this because this isn't what they're looking for in that incentive policy. So that's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't think they need to know there's an incentive there.
If Councilmember Carlyle was on the planning commission, you would want to make your decision based on what incentives they were asking. You would want more information.
Not if it was clear, and this is me in my own feet, if it was clear to me that going forward, the developer knew that what we were saying, yep, this checks all the boxes and can go forward, isn't gonna be good enough if they go forward and ask for incentive, I think I would be okay with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kitchens?
Thank you, Ms...
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hunted me to the grave too quickly. So this is a chicken and egg argument. And to Dave's gusto, I'm gonna actually agree with him a little bit here, which I know doesn't happen very often, Dave. But we, what happens a lot of times is that we're asked to consider economic impact on a neighborhood for zoning. And we're also asked to consider some form of aesthetics for the zoning as well. But sometimes those are tied directly to how much money they're gonna get. And how much money they're gonna get is tied directly to whether they get the zoning or not. And whether they get the zoning or not is tied directly to what it looks like and if they're getting incentives. So it just goes round and round in a circle. So there has to be some point where we stop talking about it at planning commission. But at the same point, we'd love to know if it was going to happen or if it's already been discussed. Cause they can discuss it after us too. They don't have to do it before. But if it's a, if it's something that they've already gone for, maybe a little checkbox says incentives have been asked on this. We don't need to know how much or anything like that. And to that same point, we are asked to make decisions about funding for places indirectly, special use permits. I've been the one that fights for longer special use permits on a lot of people. Their banking is tied directly to that. And they will not get funding for a 20-year loan to help develop them out or keep them here if they do not get a special use permit for 20 years. So, so it does come up. The funding does come up. And so there has to be somewhere, this is a real gray line. I don't know the answer to it. But there does have to be something where we look at the funding source at planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So to bring this hopefully to a halt. I appointed every commissioner here as mayor with council consent. I interviewed every commissioner here. And I never asked them, are you anti-incentive? Because I didn't have to worry about that. There have been council members, not on the current council, that are absolutely anti-incentive, that I couldn't put on the planning commission because they would not have been able to make an objective decision. They would've voted everything down simply because there was incentive involved. If they wanna get elected, great. They get elected, they can be a council member and then take that position. But if we were to go this direction, I will tell you, I would be asking as mayor, are you anti-incentive? Like as in, are you absolutely against it no matter what? Cause there are people that are that way. And I have no idea if, if one of those people is sitting at this table, because I didn't ask any of them that. So that's, that's where this really gets deep. So like, I do think that they, I think you've established in the past, Mr. Bushack, that they can ask if there's an incentive. I can't remember what, where you landed on that, but you know, I just, I just ask that the commissioners make the decision the way Councilmember Carlyle said, which is, okay, now I know. And you know, it might affect my questions a little bit, but I'm not making my, I'm not gonna change, I'm not gonna just vote this down because they're asking for incentives. And, and, and there's a lot of good faith that goes into that. Is that, is that fair?
So one of the factors that's in the UDO that can be evaluated, but our planning staff doesn't typically review this, is the economic impact on the community. That's a valid zoning factor. But that's really the extent of it. That doesn't speak to incentives and whether the project needs or doesn't need incentives. And my main concern always is in being able to defend your zoning decisions and maintaining the integrity of the zoning decisions as a land use decision. And like I said, that decision is the same whether the project is financed entirely privately or a combination of public and private financing through incentives. It's the same land use decision that you should be making. But I can't say that, that the planning commission should not know about the incentives. And it, and there may be closer ties based between the zoning and maybe the enhanced zoning, we'll call it enhanced zoning, enhanced architectural standards, enhanced design, whatever they might be providing to try to convince the city council to approve the incentives, that might be a factor from time to time. So there can be, like, like we talk about, every incentive request, every zoning decision you make is very fact-intensive. It's based on the facts and circumstances of that project and, and that, what's being proposed. And that can include incentives, and these issues may bleed together sometimes. But generally, we like to, like I said, maintain the integrity of the planning commission's decision on the land use aspects. And then the city council takes up the land use aspects and the incentive request also.
All right, did you have something? Oh, okay. Sorry, wait a minute. All right. Anybody else wanna chime in? Well, let's, it sounds like we still have some work to do on our incentive discussions, that's for sure. So we can incorporate that, because we even talked about incorporating some of the things into the incentive discussion. So that should always be on the table anyway, is revisiting that. Where are we with Ms. Dershire and Ms. Nassif?
We wanted to stay out of it.
I thought...
They ran for the hills.
You know, you guys had that. So on those next steps, we need to do a draft code update. We're gonna reach out to the home builders, have a meeting with them. We wanna touch back with our stakeholders we interviewed. And then our next step is then to get that public meeting, a public hearing scheduled with commission and then on to the council with their recommendations. So I think we have...
You work with a lot of councils and commissioners?
Yes.
How are we? Are we good?
Oh, you guys are fun. Seriously. No, I, I, you guys should not feel bad about anything you do. I love the open and honest conversation and discussion. You guys are a great group. This, this, I was looking...
I put him through much work.
I am suffering.
Would you ever tell us if we were?
I would not elaborate, but I gotta tell you, I, I was looking forward to this meeting. I knew we'd have a great discussion and you guys would be engaged and that it would not take one hour, that it would take more.
But do you, we, we do engage and we have a good discussion. A lot, can you tell them, a lot, a lot of places it's not like that?
Oh, a, a lot of places, not everybody gets the same voice. To me, it's very balanced. Not everybody participates. Sometimes it's just one or two people. And in many places, the commission and council do not communicate. The fact that this is something you do regularly, that is one of my recommendations. We do a lot of strategic planning as well, all the time. My commission and council, they need to get together. They need to get together. So, and you do have different roles. You guys are elected, the commission's appointed. You serve different purposes.
And then have you, I'm sorry, I got, we got an expert. You gotta put him on the spot. So when you see...
Let me name favorites?
Have you seen how we do these conceptuals before they do actual applications to the cities so that we can get a feel for something? Have you, has Ms. Nassif talked to you about that?
Kind of the pre-meeting to, to, to understand the application and what's going on. Yeah, so there's a lot of different forms and sometimes it's just a subcommittee that'll do that. That's very typical. But as far as being on the private side, it's great to get a heads up of what you like or don't like, or even as your city staff. All, you know, they, they just wanna know what you, you know, what are the issues so we can be prepared to give you the information.
I just feel like it helps staff mitigate for problems later on so that they're not fighting behind the scenes over stuff before it ever even gets those.
Right. That we can be prepared and give you the information you need to make a decision.
Okay. Anybody wanna ask any other question before we let him, Mr. Shire, go? Put him on the spot. All right, well, help us with these design standards, make our city more beautiful without chasing people away.
Thank you. Thank you for your motto.
Beautiful without chasing you away.
Let's stick with yours truly. You could end it. That would extra...
It was a great discussion and you guys always do a great job when we have these joint meetings. But I do wanna reiterate how much we appreciate the work that you do. You send us finished products so that we can make decisions. You don't see us tweak a lot of stuff because you do that thing, that application so well, the due diligence that you provide. Thank you for taking the new, the chair position. Big shoes to fill, I know, but...
Literally.
The conversations I've had with, with Dana Arth as the new chair, she's, she's on top of it. So you guys are in good hands. And yeah, just keep the communication open though, just if things are going on. I know that you talk, you, they actually talk with staff quite a bit, some people that we don't even get to visit with, because we're usually talking to Ms. Nassif or now Ms. Bright, I think is her, has been presenting to us lately. It used to be Mr. Elan, but you know, just, just keep working with staff and helping, help make great decisions where you are and it makes our life a lot easier. So thank you for that. Would you like to make any comments?
I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Baird, for the way you bring us together, both bodies. And I think the way that we all work together, I, I think it works really well. And we'll try to stay in our lane. But no, seriously, I, I appreciate your leadership with that and appreciate the presentation tonight. I've gotten, I've been working with the city more lately and I've gotten a real appreciation for the hard work. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think at this point, is there anybody that wants to make any last comment before we go? Yes, Councilmember Rader?
I just wanted to thank, oh, there you are. I just wanted to thank you guys. It was a great presentation. And I didn't say very much tonight because I just wanted to listen. And everybody's, I just thought everybody's comment was really good. I think we're, I, I like the fact that we're pretty much all on the same ta, on the same thought that, you know, we want this to be a beautiful city. We wanna raise the standards. We wanna make it the best that we can. So I just appreciate, I appreciate all they've done and appreciate all of the comments that I heard tonight. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Well, I'm gonna recess so that we can move back up to the dais. We'll take a short break. Let's make it about 13 minutes, come back at 8:10. And thank you all again.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we wanna invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or doing reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and as well as running calls out of here. the day with the shift and staffing, and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here, as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities, as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally, for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms to write reports, and we have additional training rooms, and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to, to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5 o'clock, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we, we go to the grocery store. When you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store, and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift, as well as their own pantry, and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which, again, is important when we're here for 48 hours. The opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are, as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station, and the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here, or numerous other people working at this station that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes, and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better, and that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible, so that way, when we're sleeping at night, and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here, that we kind of go throughout the day when we came and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal, when we run calls, when we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. When you see firefighters, where the big air tanks on their backs, and they use those in a fire, we can come back and, and fill those up, and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational, and this gives us the capability to do that. Again, to make sure that we have everything we need, and we're as capable as we can to be running calls throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine, and what this does is gives us the capability, when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear. Again, kind of getting back to that cancer, cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally, is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts, as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station. You come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day, and then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city, therefore, we want it to provide the best care and the closest units we could. So we moved one of our ambulances up, and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3, and that's the fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. The last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on, on shift every day, and they, they split the city, and this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city, while our chief of Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city, and they divide it up evenly.
Thank you for going on a tour with us today. If you have any other questions about the Lee Summit Fire Department, please go to our webpage at lsfire.net, or follow us on Facebook at Lee Summit Fire Department.
Thanks for joining us on the tour.
Hello and welcome to Meet Me at the Market, your development update on Green Street. Green Street Market is enclosed in exterior work, including roofing, glazing, tenting, and brick facade will be added soon. Wooden panels are up where glass doors will be, and workers are constructing utilities inside. When completed, a catering kitchen and concession area will be on the southwest side of the building, and bathrooms will be on both ends. Construction of the outdoor canopy adjacent to Green Street Market is ongoing. The steel beams and crossposts will support a translucent polymer roof covering the Green Street lawn, offering year-round programmed activities, events, and performances. Concrete has been poured in front of City Hall, and pavements, hardscapes, and landscaping will soon begin for Green Street growth. The Streetscape Pavilion will serve as the gateway to Green Street with an art walk featuring art from acclaimed artists, an immersive kids playground, outdoor seating, and gathering spaces. More public art is coming. Four local artists have been selected for the City Hall public parking garage, and three finalists have been chosen for the digital mural for Green Street Market. Be on the lookout for an announcement very soon. Third Street from Douglas to Green intersection is expected to open on January 30, followed by Green Street to the Johnson Street intersection in March. That's it for this episode of Meet Me at the Market. For more information on the project, visit citive ls.net/greenstreet.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
Had the opportunity to continue to grow, regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here, really, to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself.
If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crisis, they do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring, so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them, and say, 982, en route.
Officers en route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you? Can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as the co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has.
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of crisis intervention team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us, you know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this, this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's, that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story, and getting to know, who comes around and sees you? Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
That was a good first half of the meeting, or a good three-fourths of a meeting. We got to finish it up now, so we're actually on agenda item... 7A, thank you. Yes, I need, I always get confused on this. Do I need a motion to? All right. I'm going to close the regular session, open the, open the public hearing in the matter of rezoning from R1 to TNZ and a preliminary development plan for 100 Northeast Douglas Engineering Solutions LLC as the applicant. I need a motion to continue this, please, to May 6th, as of staff's request. I have a motion from Councilmember Carlisle to continue this to May 6th. I have a second by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Everybody's computers working yet?
Nope.
You need to hit run. All right. Seeing, seeing no discussion, please cast your vote. Mayor Potem Lopez. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's 9-0 to continue. Thank you. Public comments? Well, oh, oh, I am going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of agenda item 7B, rezoning from Ag to R1, 1548 Northeast Woodschapel Road, Engineering Solutions LLC as the applicant. Could I get a motion to continue this to May 6th as well? I have a motion from Councilmember Carlisle to continue this to May 6th, per staff's request. I have a second by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimous, it's continued. Now, public comments?
I have not received any requests.
Would you also continue, Ms. Fowler, R. Curry, by reading Resolution 2509?
Resolution number 25-09, a resolution expressing commitment to public safety, including a commitment to reduce violent crime within the city of Lee Summit in support of Missouri Executive Order 25-03 from Governor Mike Kehoe and the Blue Shield Program.
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt the Resolution 2509 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. You want to talk, chief? Are you ready to talk? I got questions for you, it sounds like. I got a couple people ready to chime in, but let's, let's hear from you first.
Mayor and members of council, Travis Forbes, Chief of Police. You probably have heard about this publicly. The governor has talked about a program called Blue Shield, which is essentially some sort of grant program. We're still lacking full details, but I think those will be coming out here in the, in the coming months. That can give up to $11 million statewide to law enforcement, local law enforcement. I think they primarily said they're focusing on training at this point in time, but that could change. So this is essentially an application process, and we're wanting to become a Blue Shield certified law enforcement department for, in the city of Lee Summit, for the state of Missouri.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to comment about the fact, we talked about that, we've talked about it a lot, and this is going to be a really great program. I know you, you guys are working really hard to make sure that we're getting all the information that they're requiring, and I just, just wanted to tell you, I really appreciate this, because I think it's going to be a big deal for, for our police department, so.
Fair mention.
Thank you.
I did include an application essentially of some of the requirements in the packet. It's a bit lengthy, and most likely it's overkill, but I just wanted to make sure that we gave the governor's office a good feeling about what we're doing in Lee Summit as far as, and, and the city's support from our citizens, council, and mayor as well.
All right, good. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimous. Thank you all. That's Member Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. We had Finance and Budget Committee earlier this week, and we went over our general fund and public safety sales tax funds, and some expansion requests, including some new public safety positions that I think will really benefit the city. And we'll have, I believe, one more meeting at Finance and Budget where we go over the other funds, and that'll come to full counsel for a public hearing in May. So, continuing that process. And then I had my downtown Lee Summit board meeting, since I'm their liaison, I went to that this evening. Some good discussion, including about downtown days. They have a record number of applications this year, so they're going to sell out for booth space nice and early, which is great. And they did talk a little bit about some modifications to the carnival, including reducing the footprint, so they don't have to close down Market Street, a little bit more family-friendly atmosphere with less of the games of chance and less of the big rides, and closing just a little bit earlier. I think they're going to stop selling tickets at 9:00 and close the carnival at 9:30. So just trying to make some changes to make things a little bit more family-friendly this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right. Council comments? Okay. Staff roundtable?
Thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, Chief Forbes informed you all that Kalia was in, in town. That's the law enforcement accredited.
Accreditation Agency, and I had the opportunity to meet with one of the assessors, and I will tell you that they were very, very, what's the term I want to say? Just thrilled with what they'd experienced, working with Lee Summit Police Department, the leadership and the staff on what they were going through. So those were good signs, I had heard some really good feedback from the assessor. That report, I will share some preliminary information that Chief Forbes has sent to me with all of you, but, so it's not done yet, but good things, heard some great feedback there, so wanted to report on that. And then under staff reports, I've attached memo, written memo, as every year, the city manager is to recommend a performance review, an audit, if you will, of our operations and things, and so I've provided that to all of you. I noted how we would propose to fund. It's not just one audit, it's the Pay and Growth Plan is the primary priority audit. There's a couple others in there, and at Finance and Budget, I shared how we proposed to fund those, and so I won't go into great detail here, but, so that's in your hands, that's my city manager's recommendation in order to fulfill that ordinance requirement, so. And then just real quick, a reminder, Sweep the Summit, April 26 and 27. You can sign up on the city's website to pick an area of town to clean up, and we'll do some, hand out some trash bags and pick up the trash after you're done cleaning up those areas. So encourage folks to check that out, and then Recycle Fest on May 3, and all that information's on our website.
Thank you, sir. Okay, then I need someone to read us in the closed session. Councilmember Shields, please.
Thank you, mayor. Pursuant to Section 610-2113, the advice statutes of the state of Missouri pertaining to individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment in pursuit of Section 610-219, other advice statutes of the state of Missouri pertaining to preparation, including any discussion of work product on behalf of any public governmental body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, I move for closed session.
Do you have a motion to move into closed session by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle? Discussion? After we make this vote, would you please shut down your computer and put it up here for staff to pick up? Do I have to roll call this? Mr. Bushak? Yeah. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Jim Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye. Have a good night, everyone.